I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to a private session in Goldendale City Council for May 2nd. Maybe at warp speed, I'm not sure, just on months and days. We have a full council. And before we go with the rest of the agenda, I want to introduce Pat Munyon. He's the Deputy City Administrator, working with Larry, towards Larry's retirement. You're probably going to do that again before, aren't you?
I'm excited that he's here.
Okay, we'll go on to the agenda. Are there comments or questions about the agenda before we have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this session and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you very much. We don't have presentations tonight, but we do have some interesting reports from our Goldendale Police Department and then followed by the Goldendale Fire Department. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have too much tonight, but I do want to talk about the fire that was at 204 West Darlin, which is still under investigation. But anyways, police, fire, and all other agencies assisted worked very well together. I think, you know, it couldn't have gone better, just really smooth. During that process, family members started showing up. We did, as I talked about, that TIP resource that we have now for trauma. Volunteers will come and deal with the family, you know, in crises that are falling immediately after a tragedy and stuff like that. They were called, I reached out to them. They dispatched a person out of the DAOs, come up and immediately started working with the family. So that was a real good resource and it was nice to have that, you know, and use it for the first time for the police department. Also for the fire, what I did is being that, under the nature that we had two deceased inside the building, I called Q Global Fire Investigations out of Tri-Cities and they sent in one of their top investigators. So we're still waiting on preliminary reports from the medical examiner and then he'll release his report, but he was a great asset and great help. We've used Q Global before, so. And the only other topic I have is next week, we have that instructor coming in for public information officer training for law enforcement. We, as the Goldendale Police Department, are hosting it. Goldendale Fire Department's allowing the use of their meeting room for the training and they've got some chiefs and sergeants and stuff coming from other agencies. I know we're up to about 12 students, so we're looking forward to that. And the instructor, he's really great. Sergeant Smith and I went through that earlier this year and it was a great asset and learning stuff for putting out public information to the media. So that's coming in next week and that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. Chief Noel Hong?
Yeah, so I'm going to talk a little bit more about the structured fire. It was the 23rd of April, around 8:40 a.m. It was reported to us originally as a possible structured fire. When I was en route, it was very noticeable, a structured fire. So we paged out rural seven Centerville. Officer Randall was first on scene and when I got on scene, the door had been kicked in and at that point it kind of took off from there. The house was basically fully involved. Two people did pass away in the structure. Fire is still under investigation. The police department is heading that. The first fire truck, this is what we should all be proud of, of our volunteer fire department. Our first truck was there within seven minutes of the ton out. That's huge. I mean, think about, if you think about what you were doing maybe at 8:40 in the morning on that Saturday, think about what you were doing and how much time it would take you to, one, either get ready or drive down to the fire station, whatever. Seven minutes is pretty incredible. So yeah, we, the police department, me and Jay, we worked, and his officers, we all worked really well. I want to thank, first, I want to thank all of our firefighters, the Goldendale City firefighters. They did an outstanding job in a stressful situation. We also had a group of firefighters that helped a little bit with the investigation and removing the victims from the house, which is a pretty stressful, bad thing to deal with. And so we have some pretty generous firefighters that helped out doing that. Yeah, I think the police department did an awesome job. Rural seven in Centerville, had several units there. Clickatack County EMS helped us with rehab and PVD and Avista showed up to help with, you know, disconnecting the power and I don't think they had natural gas, but they showed up as well. So thank all the partners involved and.
Good. That's, you worked, amazing, excellent. Thank you, thank you both. We don't have anyone from Public Works on, I don't believe, Larry?
No.
Okay. We'll go on to council business and the first item is the Shorelands Shoreline Master Program Agreement and Larry Bellamy, our city administrator, will present that.
Okay, the purpose of the Shoreline Master Program, periodic, I should say, the state of Washington requires a periodic review of the Shoreline Master Plan, consistent with the Shoreline Management Act by Washington State. And to that end, Department of Ecology is sponsoring a program where they offer grant to small communities like ours to cover the cost of this periodic review. So the first item on our council business and council action tonight is to request, is to give the mayor authorization to sign this grant agreement for the funds that it will take to perform the periodic review. And then the second thing we're going to talk about is the watershed company, hiring the watershed company to perform the last periodic, to perform this periodic review of the Shoreline Master Plan. And they've agreed to do it for the same amount of the grant. So we'll be able to comply with the Washington State Department of Ecology requirements and not have to spend any money on it. There will be a little bit of administrative time that we'll have to spend locally, but we do that anyway. So the first request tonight for approval is to authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement with Department of Ecology for the Shoreline Master Plan periodic review.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments? Yes, Steve?
Just how does this Shoreland Shoreline program impact the city? Could you describe what that is?
Basically, in a nutshell, it's to deal with the flood plain of the Little British Van River.
That's pretty much our only situation issue in the city that we would have to abide by this agreement.
Anyone else have comments or questions? If not, yes.
Well, no, I'm going to say, well, Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement with the Department of Ecology for a periodic review of the Shoreline Master Program in the amount of $11,200.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement with the Department of Ecology for a periodic review of the Shoreline Master Program in the amount of $11,200. If there are no further comments or questions, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you both. The vote is unanimous. The next item is the professional services agreement and Larry Bellamy will also present that.
I don't know that I need to say anything more.
Oh, it was, that was it, okay.
So just a motion to authorize you to enter into the professional services agreement to perform the periodic review.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for professional services to conduct a periodic review of the Shoreline Master Program as required by Department of Ecology in the amount not to exceed $11,200.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Are there any comments or questions from any of the council? It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement for professional services to conduct a periodic review of the Shoreline Master Program as required by Department of Ecology in the amount of, not to exceed, $11,200. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you very much. Vote is unanimous. Another piece of council business is the collectively bargained agreement and Larry Bellamy will explain that.
Okay, this is the final version. As the council has directed, the changes were made to the union contract and this is the final version. It's been reviewed by the union and their council and our attorney and myself and the marketing team, so we would recommend that the council authorize the mayor to sign and execute in 2022 to 2024 collective bargaining agreement with his officers.
I just have one question. Can we get the pages fixed on this thing?
Yes, I would be happy to do that.
They are not. I tried reading it and matching things and, who knows?
The pages, you mean, like the actual page numbers?
Correct, like on the index context table?
I got you.
Because it's not matched, so. Just a little note, it's not a big thing.
No, it's important we get it right.
And trying to read it, it's off by about three pages.
Okay. Yes, I can easily ask the legal assistant that worked on this to do that.
Are there any comments or questions?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute in 2022 to 2024 collective bargaining agreement between the city of Goldendale and Council Two Washington State Council of County and City Employees representing local 1533-G uniformed officers.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, authorize the mayor to execute a 2022 to 2024 collective bargaining agreement between the city of Goldendale and Council Two Washington State Council of County and City Employees representing local 1533-G uniformed officers. Are there any further questions or comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Vote is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the ordinances. I didn't put in my dividers and I'm really paying the price for it. And on the ordinance enacted in GMC Chapter 8.02, Larry Bellamy will present that ordinance.
Okay, we explained this at the previous council meeting, I think it was a couple of council meetings ago, and this is the ordinance form and it's ready for its second reading, so I would recommend that the ordinance be adopted and asked presented.
Council, any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance as presented.
We have a second.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 1518, which is the enactment of GMC Chapter 8.02 that authorizes a recovery of costs associated with responses to hazardous materials incidents. I'll call for a vote if there's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Everybody's going to mind through the program, really appreciate that very much. Next item is report of officers. Larry, did you have something else you wanted to?
I do, I just wanted to update the council on a couple of items and go over some exciting things that are coming up in the city of Goldendale. We received a letter from Mid-Columbian Economic Development District, sometimes called the KED. You've probably heard of them, heard Mayor mention them several times in the past. They've completed their 2022 sets, which is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Project Rankings. And in those project rankings, it takes all the project proposals and ranks them for the top 10 in Washington and the top 10 in Oregon. And the top 10, or the top 1 in Washington is the Goldendale Pump Storage Project.
Excellent.
So that's, means everybody's going to be looking to that number 1, see how we can help with getting that going to our, well, it's partly, like, it's all of Washington, so it's a little bit connecticut county too, but it still will affect us a lot.
It will.
So we need to think about that as we move forward in the process and as the development and planning company moves ahead with all of the required certifications and elements that have to go into making this possible, then we need to be ready to move forward and plan for it.
I understand there's quite a number of employees staggered throughout the time this will be built, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's very good news.
Excellent news.
Better start thinking about housing and how to provide housing as to that.
Yeah, that's going to be. Probably our feed parks.
We see that as challenges for employers, bringing people in, this tiny house opening.
Yeah, and things are happening in Goldendale and they're positive things. Really, really happy with this.
Some other items that are, that's on the agenda, we actually have something going on almost every weekend in May. So this being the first weekend coming up here at May 6th or 8th, the Home and Garden Show is going to be at the Clickatack County Fairgrounds. On May 14th, we have an annual Walk for Life by the Goldendale Pregnancy Resource Center. On May 21st, we have the Oregon Trail Rally Car Display on West Main Street. I don't know if you guys remember, but they were here last, I believe it was November, and they had a great presentation. They lined up in, like, in a car show format on Main Street. It was early in the morning, I remember, it was about 7:30 or 8. Pretty cool morning, but we were all out there and they did their little procession down South Columbus and went over to the pit area that was at the high school and started the racing from there and it was pretty fun to watch it and be part of that. So they're going to be back. They liked what they saw and experienced, so they'll be back on the 21st of May. And then on the 28th of May, we've got the Goldendale Community Sports, which is a new 501(c)(3) organization that wants to help promote community sports in town, they'll be at Econe Park. And then on June 2nd or 5th, there's the Bluegrass Picker Fest at Econe Park all day. They come from all over the Pacific Northwest and they bring their motor homes in and their tents and their camping gear and bring their guitars or their fiddles, whatever they like to play and just have a good old picker fest time. So then, the last thing that was going to involve, I'll get one more after this, June 4th and 5th is the Puget Sound Trialers on Observatory Hill Trails. They've actually been doing this for 20, about the last 10 years. You probably see them up there. And so they'll be back again. They appreciate the hospitality here in Goldendale and they keep coming back, so it's a nice little event. And then finally, we're all kind of looking forward to Community Days, so that'll be on April, or April, July 8th, 9th, 8th and 9th. And on Friday, of course, it'll be highlighted by the Time Capsule opening. We'll have kids' stuff going on with the bouncy houses and a rock wall on Friday night. Then on Saturday, we're still going to have the parade, we'll have the show and shine, still have kids' stuff going on at the courthouse lawn. Show and shine will be on West Main Street. The vendors and the other booths will be on East Main Street. We'll have a quilt show, we'll have a library book sale, and we're still working on some other items as well to nail down some, hopefully some entertainment in part of the, either West Main, either West Main or East Main. We're still trying to work that, but probably on the West Main. But things are starting to come together with that Community Days activities list as well, so we've got some exciting things happening. Shouldn't be at a loss for something to do.
Lots of good things, good healthy family items and both the city and the chamber have really put a lot of talent and effort into this whole event.
Colonel?
Yes?
Regarding, you know, the use of Main Street for these functions, I've had, I've been a bit, really, as far as the desire to use both east and west.
Absolutely. It's a resource.
Fill it up, don't be afraid to use the whole, all two blocks.
And they're growing. Thanks, Steve. We'll now hear from our city council members. I'll start with you, Steve, if you have more.
Well, I'd like to just make a short comment regarding the fire. It was unfortunate, to say the least.
Certainly.
Anytime there's life lost. But I've become aware of underlying circumstances in regards to that overall situation. You've mentioned the trauma assistance, you know, for the family members and all that. It sounds to me like, it may not have prevented it, but some sort of intervention regarding those folks' living conditions that they were having to experience, I believe probably contributed, in my opinion. I'm not an investigator, but again, I'm relying on what I've heard and the chief can either support it or whatever.
If I can add a little information to that. The family was that showed up, daughters and sons were very cooperative and they explained a lot. They had been trying to work with their parents to stay in the tri-cities and come to the tri-cities and they just wouldn't do it. They wanted to follow that. I'm talking with our building inspector, co-enforcement, he'd been working with them, trying to work with them for the last, I think he said about two years, and even at one point, he had told me that he had arranged to where he had volunteers that would help get the extreme amount of stuff inside that residence out and the city was going to, he offered to supply a dumpster and we'd take care of that for him, but they wouldn't commit. So there has been, reach out, the kids, you know, weeks prior to the incident, they were actually in the tri-cities, he was there for medical reasons and stuff, and they didn't want to come back, but the parents just wanted to come back to Goldendale and they couldn't stop them, so it is unfortunate stuff and there have been people that has been trying, trying to help them out and they just chose to live that way a lot. I mean, unfortunate.
Can I have something to say about that? I'm their neighbor, I live 50 feet away.
Mr. Johnson, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, those people lived on nothing for years.
Right.
They can't even pay their water bill. They used, we used to hook a hose up so they could take a shower. And the big cities, Seattle, they have something for people that can't pay their water bill and I think it would be advantageous if we had something, maybe a little more objective, rather than just one side of the opinion, where we could innovate. And they're not the only ones. You know all those people that live there, you know Pat. We take a collection and pay his water bill too. You know that?
Who?
Pat. He's across the way from me. And all those single white trouble, those people are living on SSI. And the city's retirement, a lot of them are up there in the millions, they're way up there. And, you know, it isn't fair to collect off of those people for the retirement, for the day. I think the American system's great, but that's something that doesn't work for those people and it's a big downer. And for them people to ever have a frame of mind that they're amongst the living, I don't see how they ever would.
Right. Well, I understand it, the system's flawed.
Well, I mean, can we introduce maybe another side to this that, like, Seattle has that, Seattle has a pretty unique system where if you can't pay it, it goes ahead and ahead. I don't know completely all about it, but I do know that it helps the people up there immensely. You've got to have water and sewer. And also know, I'm from up that area, the 12th tribe, but when these people get over 65, they need all their water and sewer needs. I mean, it's just the way, they take care of their people. And we're taking care of the immigrants, but right here in town, that was a pretty sad situation that happened there. And Chris, Chris was in there the night before and he had that burner going and Chris said, "Take it out of there, it's too dangerous." And when the fire chief comes, Chris says, "There's two people in there." And the fire chief wanted to argue, "That's bullshit, you know, we got to get on this stuff." You know, they didn't get those people out of there until noon.
Right. But when officers and everybody got on scene, right, it was, we were unable to get in because of the engulfed inside.
Oh, that's a, they're a mess box.
I understand it. And what I wanted to also touch on this, the reason they didn't get out of there, they weren't removed until noon, or it was afternoon before they were moved out just because of the investigation. Police were there securing the scene and we were waiting for the investigator to get in.
You'd have to make no excuse, I understand thoroughly. You know, she was trapped in the bathroom and he burned up in the living room and that was just, I don't like to sound, you know.
I would like to say something. I am the fire chief and I did not argue with anybody. There was a lot of people on scene that wanted us to get into that building.
I didn't mean to say that, I didn't even know that, no. I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to imply that way.
So, the problem, the problem being is that the house was fully involved and, I don't know how to say this, if somebody was inside at that moment, there's nothing we can do for that person, the building was that involved.
Oh, I know, it's hard, it's not easy to be the fire.
We did what we could to try to, to try to do it, it's just unfortunate.
Same time, I'm the neighbor living 50 feet away, it's pretty hard on me too.
Yep, yeah.
I understand you guys also, you know. And, you know, my dad was fire chief for years and I know what they're up against, but that wasn't a fun situation at all.
Not at all.
And they've been up against that for years. But, you know, it, I really, my idea is there's more than one side to a story, there's many sides. And all I'm asking, you do what you want to do, but I wish you would introduce another side to the story, that we can have something for these people that can't pay their water bill. That's all I'm asking, you know, no more than that, that's all, you know, because my heart goes out to those people. And it's just like our system, now, we got a great system here in America, but when you use the postal system, that also goes to help people retire, you can't, that's a good deal. But also, you got to remember, a lot of people that are using that postal system are living on SSI and it's a bitch. And I don't know, I've got a little older and I don't, I don't even understand these languages anymore on the iPhone. I have a hell of a time. And so I know how it is for people like that and that's tough. But Gary, Gary Burgess, he helps out Pat, you know, and there's always somebody in that block that helps out somebody else that can't pay their water bill. And I, I think it's time for the city to take the bow by the horns and, you know, just have an open discussion about it and if not, you know, you can do what you want, it's your deal. But I think it would be neat if we had some kind of program like the big cities, you know, that's just the way I see it. That's why I come down tonight, I just really wanted to express that and that's it, so.
Well, thank you for coming down.
Well, Mayor, if I may, go ahead. Well, we need to move on with the meeting, but we appreciate the remarks and we will work on finding solutions for that issue of not having the money or at least finding agencies that can help those people. That's something that we.
Yeah, and, you know, most cities, I don't know if you're aware of it, but most cities will not re-permit those old trailers over and over. This city does. It's a troublemaker, I believe. It's a troublemaker, I believe me, 'cause these people, a lot of these places aren't safe. I mean, they got room and wiring in them. Well, you know, Noah, you, you're aware of it.
And I think, Larry, we don't allow single wide mobile homes in the city.
Not, not new ones.
Okay. But if they're, but if they're set up, they stay there?
If they're existing and they're set up, then they're grandfathered in.
Yeah, if they get, yeah, that's the way it is. It's hard. It's hard, even if they're grandfathered in. Some of those are, they're pretty shady, you know? I mean, I, they'd come by and ask me for stuff, like a washer or a dryer, so they can live in them. And they don't, people don't have anything to live in those. They just don't. So it's, it's real hard on the west side here.
Excuse me. That's an interesting issue regarding the single whites. And we, we have a moratorium on the placement of single whites.
Steve, can you speak up? He's having trouble hearing you.
We do have a moratorium on the placement of single white trailers. And it would be, it could be addressed in, in the ordinances that we have, existing ordinances, which I brought up before
Right.
in regards to these type of situations. But the gentleman brings up an interesting, well, interesting to say the least, compelling and humanitarian issue here that, he's right, we should, you're right. We should look into this because it is prevalent around town. And again, it falls in line, saying that issue falls in line with what I have brought up already before regarding travel trailers, RVs, some of these dilapidated units that flat out just aren't livable, that folks are living in. And we've got to look at this seriously.
It's, it's something we have to, we have to find a solution. This won't be the time seeming, but we, we can do it in the ordinance committee and then bring it in for an agenda item.
Of all the committees we've got, the ordinance committee has probably got the biggest load to carry right now. Overall, the ordinances are the tool that we use to govern our city. It's as simple as that.
Yeah. And they're not easy to keep in line or to develop them or to change them.
Well, it's, it's an ongoing situation. They have to be updated fairly regularly. Anyway.
Well, he, he lived there over 20 years.
Well, and along those lines, you know, like, we've talked about this, there's a fine line between intervention and intrusion with people's lives. I mean, this is, this is a hot button issue, has been for a long time.
What bothers me, I got another trailer that's 50 feet from my house. I'm worried about that one at this point. It's a concern.
It's not the only ones.
No, but that, those are that close to my house. It's not that my house will burn, but I know those people. I know them well, so they're my neighbors, so.
They're family, they're members of the community. I say they're family, they're members of the community.
Yeah, oh, you bet, yeah. You know, I know all the roses and eight have it, you know, I've been around them forever or something. You know, I know what they do every day and what goes on.
We will look into this. We will.
Okay, thank you, that's all I want. I hope that we can find another side to the story to look at a little bit, that we could talk about, maybe be an invented or something, or at least a side, maybe five sides. You know, there's a lot of sides that we could talk about.
We'll work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll move on to Dave Johnson, unless you have more that you want to add.
One other thing, for department reports, I would really appreciate a department report from Public Works. All the department heads
We're gonna have...
have to make a presentation and Public Works department head sits right here. And time after time, we don't get a report.
Patrick Munnion is here for his first day today and he will be responsible to give you that report at the next council meeting.
Okay, well, I just want to make a note, Patrick, that I'm requesting...
I'm already prepared for that.
I'm formally requesting that it be part of the regular presentations.
No, I, I agree, but only being here one day, I have a little less time than I do.
Get in gear.
I'm working on it.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to mention that Home and Garden Show, Larry mentioned it earlier, you know, they already sold out all their spots for vendors, so you can count on it being a really good turnout up there. If you haven't been to it before, this'll probably be the best one I've ever had, I imagine, but, and you could probably find a good Mother's Day gift. You know, a lot of people really worked hard to put that on, so thanks to everybody from the Chamber of Commerce and everybody else that helped to organize that, that's a lot of work. Oh, I noticed this, Nancy gave us these from the Sinnerville Church, it's their church, Bolton, and it says here, "The Sinnerville Community Church continues to pray for the members of the Goldendale City Council." Hey, thanks for that. That's needed and appreciated. That's all I had.
Thank you. Those things matter.
Yes, they do.
No reports.
Trying to see where I want to go with this. I wasn't gonna have anything, but I do have a question and then maybe we can look into it in the ordinance committee. You mentioned the, a single whites being grandfathered in, but I'm wondering if that is grandfathered in per tenant or...
Per what?
For each tenant?
Oh, okay.
Or for the property? I know there's some out there that are rented over and over and over, and I think we've looked at this issue before because it puts people in danger when they're being rented over and over and there is really no ordinance that says what they have to do, but we know that they don't need, you know, standards now. And so they put, when people are renting those old trailers, and there's several out there that are rented out every six months and every year or whatever, it puts those people in danger as well as, you know, the fire chief mentioned it, and the police department mentioned, a tri going into this home, it puts, obviously it's, it's a tragedy, but it's a tragedy that also puts our responders at a huge risk
Exactly.
in trying to do a rescue. And to allow for this council to not do anything and to continue allowing it by not doing anything, it's a, it's a huge disservice.
Can I mention something too on that same lines with the ordinance? I know, we've been in several single, single whites, and I will mention, there's also double whites, the same vintage that are in the same category that sometimes people forget. But they do get remodeled and everything as well. So the single whites, you know, they go in there, put new flooring, cabinets, you know, all this stuff, which I'm not sure requires a permit or not, cannot even be done to these units. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Some are obviously beyond repair. I'm sure you're aware of that. And those are the ones that I think you would have to focus on, at least by beginning with. You gotta prioritize this.
Right.
And along the same lines, you know, we're, we're talking about single white trailers, double white trailers, there's some stick-built houses in this town that fit the same criteria, but because they're stick-built...
It's a different category.
They're approached differently, but it still boils down to the same issue.
The same.
It's the very same issue. So again, this is some of the stuff the ordinance committee is gonna have to thrash through and shake out.
What is the issue? Is it wiring? Is it the proliferation of items inside the homes that make it difficult to access?
Only above.
Just those two things or is there more?
So, so those vintage of, the vintage of mobile homes that we're talking about, and I believe are pre-78? Maybe five, something, something in that nature? I cannot answer.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six, okay. The way they were constructed, really lightweight construction, the, there's no, unless they were remodeled, it was more like, what do you call those sideboards in them? Paneling, wood paneling, very combustible materials. So fire goes through those really fast. The other thing is, they mentioned aluminum wiring, so they're very, their wired is not, I don't know what to say about that.
Well, the only fix for aluminum wiring is you have to use a copper, they should've been updated with a copper and pigtails sometime at every electric pot, light, and switch. That makes them a lot safer. Sorry. But, yeah, they're, and any work that is done structurally to a manufactured home, they have to, they're supposed to go through, they don't go through the city building department 'cause they're all approved by LNI. They have to go through an LNI process to get the permit in those, which is very rarely done unless somebody's really intensely remodeling it, like new flooring, new siding, or even if they're removing a wall or paneling, they have to go through LNI to get their permits because it all changes the weight and shift capacity of a portable structure. Because you gotta remember, they were designed as such a portable, or portable structure. But that very rarely happens. The, you know, the only thing sitting here listening tonight is, I'd have to do a little research, but I'm sure there should be some way that a fire marshal could do a life safety inspection on a structure that he feels is dangerous to, and gain access to that to determine what the condition is of the structure and is it safe to live in and make a recommendation for improvements to that structure before it can be occupied.
Good approach. It's a good idea. So anyways, I, I know there's some things that are grandfathered in, but sort of the other part of the research would be, is it grandfathered in to be rented over and over or is it when the tenants change, when the occupants change, does that end that piece? You know, and so that would be huge to know. If you're a long-term resident, you have your home. If you're going to be renting it and rent out a piece that puts people in danger, you shouldn't, right? So, and it was just one thing to look at and...
Some years ago, I don't remember how many years ago, there was a rental inspection program that was discussed at a council meeting and it never got passed. The, and they said, one of the things they said was, "Enforce your existing rules and maybe we can get rid of some of that." Well, we've been enforcing the existing rules to the best of our ability and we think, even the building inspector would agree, that we need a rental inspection program and that would touch on anything that's rented. It wouldn't be just single whites, it wouldn't be just double whites, it wouldn't be just single, or a single family or stick-built. Stick-built, but anything that's rented. And you're gonna pick up 50% of the housing stock in Goldendale by doing that.
And that would be huge because even if you have apartment complex, but do they have up-to-date smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors? And I know there's been fires where the fire department responds and those are very much questionable, you know? If it's somebody's home, you can only do so much, right? But if it's a rented property, there's things that can be enforced to do that. And I know we, in years past, we talked about code enforcement and there was another property in which the fire department responded and there was open sewage on the property. So I think it's, we need to get back to that and give our code enforcement officer
Some tools.
the go and the tools and the support he needs to do that.
Well, it's becoming, it's becoming a life safety issue these days.
Yes.
Yeah, that Ken Bostick, you know, he worked there for you guys for a while. But his last year, all he did is gloated about his retirement and that, that don't help our city at all. We gotta get on base here somehow with some of this stuff. We do, I'm sorry to say it, Larry, but you know, that don't cut it, you know? I mean, he's spent an hour out there telling us about...
We need to go forward from today and I think that we've got some support here to look at some additional opportunities to make...
But also we need to look at some of the issues we've had in the past and, you know, to try to heal them up. And most of my friends have been single whites, they pull you down here. I mean, he's scared to death too. I mean, he, he's just scared as anybody when he sees what happened to Abe and Rose. I mean, these people don't want their place burning up. So, I mean, anybody has, anybody has a single white has had a wake-up call, believe me, that's, it's been a bitch.
Yeah.
It's not an easy issue to address.
No, it's not.
It's gonna take a lot of work and then when you do, you end up condemning these places or renters end up spending money and raising the rent, then what is council gonna do when we're having short housing stock, where there's not rentals available, rental prices are sky high? Are we gonna subsidize rental costs or are we gonna help people live on the streets? What's the, what's the solution then?
There has to be a balance to it, but some things...
It's complex.
Yeah, it is complex. It is complex. And at the same time, I think we should look at some issues, you know, as to how to cover, how to provide some water assistance and utility assistance like all the other utility companies provide.
In fact, in fact, we work with WOGAP, Washington Association, Washington Action Program, whatever they call it.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that, but they can go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead, you can...
Well, no, I was just gonna say, Mayor, my comments, that one of the, perhaps WOGAP would help on the city for residents for water and sewer.
They do all the time.
Do, okay, okay. That's too bad.
The tenant or the, yes, the tenants need to ask.
Right, yeah, they have to go, the office is right here in town.
They have to fill out the forms and they send a check.
Yes. And we have senior discounts.
For what?
Ten, twenty, thirty, and forty percent.
It helps people out if they can't pay their bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Washington Gorge Action Program.
I didn't know that. I'll pass the, pass the word around.
And DSHS has helped out a few people as well.
Because every time I go in there, I complain about my bill and you say it's dangerous standing in the shower too long.
I have never said that.
Miley, did you have other things you want to add?
Well, I just, I'll comment and also how good of a job I felt that the police department and the fire department did on this incident that happened, so. But anyway, the Serb, this WOGAP office is, office is just right down on, on Main Street there, just down from Dan McCready's. So you just go in there, I don't know what you have to do, but then that's a start.
Yeah, okay, we'll send them down there.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm all done, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Under Mayor's remarks, probably ought to explain something. A roving discussion very often shouldn't happen in city council. This is one that has to happen. It absolutely has to. We have, we live in a community that is, has tremendously challenged people economically. They're either elderly and little money or other issues in their life that they don't have money. And we need to be conscious of the people around us that we can help in a lot of different ways. Churches can help, the city can help, WOGAP can help, a lot of different services can be provided. And I think we'll, we'll be able to focus on that because this was pretty much a unanimous discussion of what we need to try to work for. And I think that's very worthwhile. The other thing I wanted to welcome, Pat and to Goldendale Live and his work with the city, I think we'll enjoy very much. I don't really have anything else other than the fact that this is a topic that rules don't stop for discussing. We discuss it because it's something that's a real need. We all know it and we can't ignore it. That's my remark. We're going now into public comment. Is there anybody on the line? I think Ken might be on the line. For public comment. Anybody here in the room for public comment? You've, you've had your public comment really good. Okay. It will move to, a move, a motion to adjourn the meeting. We're not having an executive session tonight, not quite ready to go.
I move to adjourn.
One last thing. We've discussed this a lot before, two... We discussed this a lot before too, and that is establishing a schedule for our committees when they're going to meet. And, well, like one comment, we've got to schedule for our council meetings. There's no reason why we can't schedule our committee meetings the same way. If there's, you know, meetings coming up and there's nothing there, cancel it. But I think it's really important that we get some substance, get some structure to these committees. We've got a bunch of committees and when we're just willy-nilly, it's...
Well, I think we've, we've had, and you and I've gone over the calendar and looked at the things. We can do two to three committee meetings every two weeks if we want to. We haven't done much of that because of a lot of other things going on. But we can set either hard, fast, or do it by the need. I think we may want to go more to the need initially till we get everything lined out on the committees. Orness Committee in particular has a lot of things to discuss, the others as well, but that's particularly crucial. Same with events because we're right in the middle of event heaven right now.
Yeah, for sure. Well, Public Works, I don't know, a big proponent of Public Works to Public Works, one of the three major departments we got is equal in importance to how the city runs. And it'd be nice to be more on top of that.
We have a brand new...
I had this session with Doug today. I just need time to sit down with him. I'll be giving the reports in the future, but I just didn't have time today to prepare anything.
I'll be patient.
I guarantee by the next one, you will have a report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, we've been talking about having some more regular Public Works meetings to look at the committee. So when you're up and running and get a chance, reach out to the Public Works Committee. I think we'd all be delighted to sit down and visit with you.
Sure.
Thanks, Pat.
Okay. We had a motion.
I made the motion.
Say it.
Moved and said that the fastest city council members in the world, very generous.